Testing.
Good evening, good evening. Good evening. You might have a slight delay. You heard me before, huh? Look where the video is. You may have a slight delay. Good evening, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's town hall meeting. My name is Bumont Todd. I am the communications and training manager for the Department of Inland Revenue. I want to thank you all for being here with us this evening. Sounds a little bit too loud. Can you hear me? Okay, so we just want to open up with a quick prayer. And then we'll get started in our program. I see persons are still filing in. That's all right as they come in. We just want to remind persons before the night itself, please make sure you register. So we can have you as a part of our count for this evening. But let me just start with a quick prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace and mercy, oh God. Thank you for all the persons that are here and those that are on the way, God. In Jesus' name that you bring them safely, because that the information that is shared, oh God, goes forward with power and with anointing to help to illuminate, educate, and make the process of what everyone does with the Department of Inland Revenue easier, oh God. I pray, Father, in Jesus' name that you bless our speakers and our presenters this evening and help us as we go through this evening. Jesus' name we say. Amen. So welcome once again to everyone that's here. Thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules this evening. Once again, my name is Bumont Todd. I am the communications and training manager for the Department of Inland Revenue. We are doing everything we can possibly can to make the process of business license renewal. Yes, sir. Let me give me a moment. Let me see if I could fix that a little bit. Is this better? Is this better? Is this better? Okay. All right, sorry about that. I allowed as it is, but I was trying not to be too loud. So those persons listening in on the stream at the same time want to make sure they can hear. And they can hear fairly. So once again, I was saying that the Department of Inland Revenue, we're trying everything possible in our power to make the process of business license renewal dealing with your real property and your VAT filing as easy as possible. This is a series of a number of events that we're trying to do throughout all the different family islands as we go, especially where we have offices. We'll also be inside Eluthro next, actually Eluthro Monday coming. We'll be inside Governor's Harbor one day and then we'll be in Harbor Island for another few days. So we're making efforts like this to try to make it as easy as possible for persons to renew their business license. As you can see, we have our wonderful team that's actually at the back. So if you need any assistance, yes, getting help to work through. The lovely Ms. Lyons sitting in the back, they'll be happy to assist you if you have any questions. And our wonderful panel and team that's actually here will be presenting on business license renewal, real property and VAT filing. But before we get started this evening, I just want to welcome Mr. Cleveland Dawkins, who is actually the manager for our Abaco office, just to share a few words with you as we get started.
Good night, everybody. I'm happy to see you all here tonight. To witness something that doesn't happen too much in Abaco with this government department. And this is a good opportunity for us, me, especially me, who just joined the department about a year ago. So you know, I'm in the learning process. A lot of question that I was bombarded with. I couldn't answer you all, but I'm happy to have the expert here. We have the best here from Inland Revenue. If they don't know, nobody else know. To deal with your problems and to answer your question. When I was former customer officer, all those years I spent in customs, I didn't believe me, never had no time meeting. So I just, my opportunity, this is my often charged and praised opportunity to meet the host of time meeting is in the pattern of inland revenue. Which is a pleasure for me to let my people knows that they are here with you all. To answer any question. And don't be afraid, because they are here. I don't want you all to ask, we failed to ask them question when they return to Nassau. Next week, then you are coming back badly with a question and I do not answer. When we have the expert right in front of you, not in the back door, in the front of your door. Now, the opportunity I want, because like Mr. Todd said, we, you know, the human don't like to be after two hours. So whenever you ask a question, just limit the questions at least to one. We don't want one individual asking three or four questions. The other ones doesn't have the opportunity to ask a question. Because we want everybody to feel like hmm and ah, given it's a sound done, you may get a good answer on a dumb question. Ask the question. You must afraid of them. They are here to help you all. They are here to help you all so much as to let you know that they care. We have officers in the alive building to assist people until next week Tuesday to deal with your problem, to help you all with your own problem. To make sure that when they leave this island, you all will have knowledge. Because knowledge is power. And when you hear from the expert, you don't have no other choice to learn a little something today. So have an open mind. And maturity, let maturity display itself. We don't want no arrogance and see or people, you know, that's after decent practice, you get a good answer. If any constructive criticism, do it with respect. Because we know it's time maybe we help people to construct their criticism, but respect the officer. They are here to help, they are not your enemy. So sit back and enjoy yourself.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dawkins. So I was just saying again, as Mr. Dawkins, so we are actually going to be here until Friday. We'll be leaving on Friday. So while we are actually here making the town hall meeting presentation this evening, we'll also be inside the live office inside Marsh Harbor tomorrow for anything related to a business license. Or if you need business license assistance with your renewal, we'll have one of our staff members inside the alive office, Marsh Harbor. And first of all, let me say thank you to Alive as well for partnering with us with this. We'll also have persons on tomorrow, Friday, and like Mr. Dawkins said, next week Tuesday and next week Monday as well. And we're also doing this inside Exuma, Eluthro, as well as inside some of the other hours. This weekend also, Mr. Dawkins, we'll also have extended hours for our government complex, because Alive is actually closed on the weekends. We'll have staff there between 10 to 3 as well. So we've still need additional assistance. We still have persons in place to assist you with that as well. So like I said, we're trying everything possible to make this process this year as smooth as possible when it comes to the business license renewal. And I know our people, we like come last minute. So we encouraging persons, please. While we are offering the assistance early, the please come out. We're also inside Nassau, going to be inside the Mall at Marathon. For those persons inside Nassau as well as Southwest Harbor Bay. So we're encouraging persons to take the opportunity. And this is actually our VAT anniversary. This is 10 years of VAT. I know we don't like pay taxes, forgive yourselves a hand. It's 10 years of VAT. And we're celebrating as a part of our 10-year anniversary. So we have a number of events that are going to be going on this year. So I'm encouraging persons while you're here. If you have a chance to stop by the desk and also register, because we're doing a giveaway next week. Alive is providing us one or two wonderful gifts to be able to give our persons, both on the family island and in Nassau. So please, don't miss out the opportunity for it, as well as we invite you to also give customer feedback. Because we're always trying to improve how we do our service and what we're doing at the end of the day. And I know the first question is going to come up about the phones. That is something that we're aware of and we're working on, because I know a lot of persons have been telling me from, I've been here for the last day or so. That's one of the issues that we're aware of. But right before we get started with our presentations, I just want to invite our local government representative, Mr. Ross Groob Thompson, Jr., correct? Did I say a few words for us, please?
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight, Department of Inland Revenue. Really appreciate it. On behalf of, and I will say this, we're in the process of elections. So I'm the former chairman of the Marsh Harbor Spring City Township. I'm also a former chief counselor and I am also a former council member this last term. I speak on behalf of all local government practitioners here, my chief counselor who was Faran Newbold and Derek Dawkins, both chairman, one of Dundas Town and one of Murfreesboro Town. I want to say thank you for y'all being here tonight, especially the Department of Inland Revenue. So people can reach out and ask them questions that I know we have a lot of here in Abaco. I am extremely grateful that you've taken the time to come over here and do this. And to give us that opportunity to present our questions, our queries, whatever it may be, moving forward. The only thing I will say in future, please include local government in your networking. And you'll get a lot more people here, because it really hurts my heart to see, you know, this is something that is very dear to me and it's also dear to a lot of people in Abaco. Is our Inland Revenue, but it's also business license. It also has to do with everything that we bring in that on top of businesses. So just in future, include local government in. We do have an office at the government complex in that regards. But I will say on behalf of local government in the Marsh Harbor Central Abaco District area, I am very grateful you're here and we appreciate you being here to answer our questions. And thank you for the people that turned out tonight. I see a lot of faces I know. And I'm very grateful to be here. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much, sir. And to get us started off tonight, we are going to have our first presentation done by Ms. Charlene Barton. Ms. Barton is the registration supervisor at the Department of Inland Revenue. So she got the broad show list that have to deal with the business license renewals and the backend processes. So when she's actually done with her presentation, she'll probably be at the back of the room. So if you have any questions along after presentation, please feel free to ask about those. I'm just going to start with Ms. Barton.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, tonight I'm going to go over the process for you to renew your business license. I want you to be mindful that good, we good? All right. Okay. So I just want to make sure that if you, can I have a show of hands in here who have, who had a 2024 business license? Okay. All right. So I just want to make sure that we understand that if you didn't renew your license in 2024 and you log into our online tax administration, your process is different from what I'm going to show you here as the renewal. If you're just say your last license would have been 22. Once you log into our online tax administration, you're going to go to the inbox and you're going to send us an inquiry message so we can put you up to date. In that message, you would indicate to us from 22 to present, what is your turnover? And once you do that at the end of the process, you'll get an inquiry number and we'll take everything from there. The next time you'll hear from the department will be when you will receive your business license. All right. So I'm just going to go over the renewal process on our online tax administration system. So once you log on, you have your username and password. You get onto the system. So once you log on, you have your username and password, you get on to the system, you will see this here. All right, so you will go to the returns tab, if I have it there highlighted, let's click here. Once you click there. All right, you would then select the tax type as annual actual and the year will be twenty twenty-four. Okay, once that is completed, then you will then hit start return. Yeah. All right, once you select those two tax type, annual actual, twenty twenty-four. You will then see the button that says start return. Once you click start return. This will then be our next win window, you then hit down to the bottom where it says save and continue. You would get the return overview, you would then hit save and continue again. Okay, when you now get to the license detail screen here. How much ever licenses you have will show up here in that view detail screen. So if you're a person that has two licenses, three licenses, whatever number of licenses you have with the department, that number will show up there. You would then click that. It brings you here to this screen. Now first, when we first launched for the renewal in January one, we were having a bit of a challenge where persons were seeing duplicate. So me as a person who has a license, I would have seen my taxi show up multiple times. All right, we put a message out to just remove the duplicates, leaving your one license there. All right, um, that has been fixed now, so you should not encounter that, but if you do, you are familiar with the process and what to do to remove the licenses. Now then you'll go to change. All right, now on this screen, you don't touch anything, there's only one, um, line you go through. And that is the actual turnover. You see the red asterisk there, you go ahead, you enter in your actual turnover. All right, I'm going to say it again, you do not fill out anything else on this page except the actual turnover. Once that is completed, you then hit save. All right, we'll be back to the same screen again, you then hit back. All right, it gives you an overview of what it is you would have, um, sent, sent us, you hit save and continue. And if you, if you are over two hundred fifty thousand, you must be reminded that you are to present us with an accounting certification. If you are over five million, you know your obligation is to give us audited financials. And then you hit save and continue. You will review the application, select the declaration and submit your return. Okay, so the process there was just to show that the turnover you actually made for the year twenty twenty-four. All right, now, we're not done yet, now there's a lot of applications in, but the persons only did the actual. Uh, the, the license renewal process is two parts, you have the annual actual and then now you have the estimate for twenty twenty-five. So we're going to go, we're going to go through that process. Um, before I go through that process, do we have any questions now as it relates to the actual? Okay, we can go ahead, Mr. Todd. All right, so we're back to the same screen, we go right back to the returns tab, file a return. We're back into this very familiar screen, but at this, at this juncture, we will select annual estimate. And we will give a twenty twenty-five prediction for your estimate. Okay, once I selected, you're going to hit start return. You're going to hit save and continue. You're going to hit save and continue again. Okay, when you get now to this license detail screen, you're going to click that button there that says add detail. Once you click that, a window is going to pop up. And it's going to ask you, yes, load previous details. All right, this now populates your twenty twenty-four details, it populates now in your twenty twenty-five. Once you have load, um, clicked that. Then this window now comes up, you click change, again, if duplicate is there, please do remove the duplicate. Okay, and the only thing you are filling out in this is an estimated turnover. Now this is you giving the department your prediction, which you anticipate to make. Okay, now be very mindful that if you give us a figure that's over a hundred thousand of one dollars, you will be taxed as well. But also remember too that that, that estimated tax, when you now come to file your twenty twenty-five actual. That, that amount you paid works now as a credit for you. Okay, so once you put that in, you save and continue, we back to this, to this window here, you hit back. We go ahead and we click save and continue again. Uh, if there's any documentation that's needed, um, you can also upload your actual documents again from the twenty-four if you're over the threshold of two hundred fifty thousand. Save and continue. You'll click the declaration and you will hit submit return. Okay, once you see this window here, you have successfully submitted your renewal for the twenty twenty-five business license year. Do we have any questions at this time? No questions? Okay. All right, thank you ladies, I will be in the back if you have any, um, issues that you need further attention to do it, I'll be in the back, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barton. Uh, no question, that means everybody got their business in order, I like that, I like that. So, um, she'll be inside the box, if you have any further additional questions, please feel free to meet her inside the back of the room. Our next presentation is going to be by Ms. Bria Brown, who is the general processing supervisor of the Department of Inland Revenue. And she deals with all of the fun stuff that pertains to VAT, VAT filing. And a output, input and everything else pertaining to VAT, so let's just give her a hand.
Good evening. I stated my name is Bria Brown and I work in the general processing department. So we deal with VAT filing, um, amendments and VAT refunds. So before, before I go over how to file a VAT return, I wanted to give a brief overview of VAT itself. So VAT was first introduced in January twenty fifteen and it started at a rate of seven point five percent. It is a consumption tax, so the consumer, our customers would buy goods that have VAT attached to it. The business would collect those funds and remit it to the government. So our rates, as I stated, when we initially started, it was at a seven point five, then increased to twelve and it is now currently at ten percent. In April, non-prepared food items will be at a five percent. And those are items you would find in the grocery store, so fruits, vegetables, canned goods, things like that. But rest of raw food, that would still be at the ten percent. So what is VAT charged on, so the goods and services supplied domestically. So anything bought and consumed within the Bahamas will be at the ten percent. Or goods and services exported will be at a zero percent. So those items such as, for example, fishermen, they export fish, so those items would be at a zero percent. Our imports would come through the customs department are also at the ten percent. So our individuals who can charge VAT, so if you are a business license holder. And you reach that one hundred thousand dollar threshold, you will then register for VAT and you will become a VAT registrant. And those are the only individuals who should be charging VAT. If you are not a VAT registrant, you are only a tin only registrant or a business license holder. So our VAT registrations, there's mandatory registration, so once you hit that one hundred thousand dollars, you must register for VAT. Within fourteen days of meeting that threshold, or else you will incur penalties. And voluntary registrants, if you are below that one hundred thousand, but you still wish to become a VAT registrant, you are allowed to do so. And once again, the threshold is a hundred thousand. So if you anticipate reaching that threshold within the calendar year, you can preemptively, um, apply for VAT. So this is our tax categories. So as you can see, based on the turnover you make within the year will determine whether you are a petty, um, taxpayer or a very large. And that will determine how frequently you file your VAT return. So we have filing frequencies of both monthly and quarterly. If you are a quarter quarterly filer, you file at the end of the three month period, so every three months you must file. And if you are a monthly filer, you file at the end of every month. So here is an example of what a VAT certificate looks like and the responsibilities of a VAT registrant. So the tax certificate should be displayed prominently where anyone who comes into the business can see it. If it is not prominently shown, you should be able to ask the establishment to see their VAT certificate. If they don't provide you with one, then they shouldn't be charging you VAT. Their prices should be VAT inclusive, so if you go into a grocery store and you pick up an item, you should be able to see the VAT on that item right there. Their invoices that they present to you should be valid invoices, which means it should have the company's name on it, its tin number. Its description of the item, it should have a invoice date. It should clearly show you the subtotal of that good and then the VAT added to it and then how much you would pay at the end. VAT registrants should maintain proper records, so later on I will show like an example of what the input and output worksheet should look like. But these records, records are important for if you're asking for an amendment or a refund. Any officer who is doing that on your behalf will need to see these records. And if they can't clearly understand what is in your accounting software or inside your filing. They will ask you to remove things because it isn't properly documented. So another thing is that filing must be done accurately and in a timely manner. So when the deadline comes around, you must file within that period or you will incur penalties. So the VAT equation, so it is your output, so your sales and revenues minus your input, your expenses. And it will equal to either a VAT payable or a VAT credit. If your output is greater than your input, that is a VAT payable. And if your input is higher than your output, you will be in a VAT credit. Okay. Yeah, so if your output, so your sales are greater than your input, your expenses, you will be in a VAT payable. And if your expenses is, are greater than your revenue, you will be in a VAT credit. So our accounting methods, so we have the invoice method on our cash basis. So the invoice method, if you are on the invoice, that means when you receive an invoice, whatever the date is on that invoice. Will be where you can file that invoice. So for example, you bought, you're a construction company, you bought cement. If you bought that in January and you are a quarterly filer, that date will say a date of, let's say, the tenth of January. So that means when you file now in, at the end of March, that invoice should be in your January to March filing. If you're on the cash basis, you pay, you file based on when you pay for the item or you are paid. So that same scenario, if you bought the cement in January, but you didn't pay for it until April. Then that file, that invoice should be filed in April to June, not in January to March, okay? And here is our reporting methods, so the standard reporting method is the default that everyone starts at. So that means if you sell goods and services at the rate of ten percent and when you're filing, it, you will report it on a rate of ten percent. If you're on the flat rate, you still sell the goods at ten percent, but when you are doing your filing, it is now being filed at a six point five percent. So the flat rate is mainly used by small businesses. Because it doesn't require as much accounting records as the standard rate filers. And the also difference between standard rate and flat rate, standard rate, uh, registrants, they can claim back expenses. So your light bills, your expenses bought to do your business, you can claim those back. But flat rate participants, they can't keep claiming back inputs into the business unless it's a capital input. So if they have machinery and they sold it in a period, they can claim that back, but they can only claim that back once. So to be a flat rate participant, there is an application that needs to be filled out and you must re, meet the requirements. So you can't be a member of the port area, so in preport, if they are under the Hawksbill Agreement, you can't be a member of that. You can't be a deferred VAT registrant, so there is a program with customs. That if you are able to defer VAT, that means you don't pay at the border, you would pay at a later date. So you can't be one of those registrants, you can't be a seller of zero rated or exempt goods. And that's mainly because the flat rate only allows you to report at standard rates items, so taxable items. So if you only sell zero rated goods and exempt goods, you can, it will be recorded as a ten percent. Which it shouldn't be because that is against the law. You can't be a part of a VAT group, so there are some companies that have different subsets of their company. And they all have different tents, one head company can decide to file and pay on behalf of the other ones. And that can happen only once the, all those companies are grouped together. And finally, your VAT filings and your BL filings must be up to date as well as their payments. And all your turnover for that year must be below a four hundred thousand dollar threshold. So filing a VAT return. So if you log into our website, so inlandrevenue.finance dot W W S. The circle should be over, there's a login button right there at the top, if you press that, that will take you to. The login information for your profile, once you put in your username, your password, login, it'll take you to the homepage. And this is what it would look like. So next. So here you go, so there is at the top of the page where your name is, if you were to press that, this is where you can switch taxpayers. So if you have multiple business, multiple tins underneath that user ID, you can switch between them. And you can also change your password and anything also from this section. And you can also change your password and anything also from this section. So if we're going to file our return, so you go to the Returns tab, you select File a Return. That will take you to this screen. In the Tax Type, you put Value Added Tax. You put the year you wish to file, which will generate all the years. And you select the return you wish to file. So when you come to the first step, you can press Enter Filing, or you can Save and Continue, and it will move you on to the next stage. And it will generate your VAT return. So you enter in the figures based on, so the first thing you will see is your input tax, so your revenue. So based on the type of goods you provide, you would put them on each line. So the first line would be yours, zero-rated supplies. So as I stated, fishermen, they export, so their goods would go on line one. If you are a part of the Global Blue Program, you sell to tourists, so they would also go on line one because tourists are not charged VAT at 10%. If you have exempt supplies, those would go on line two. And as I said, line three is mainly for preport, who are part of the port, the port area. Line four is your taxable supply. So majority of people will only use line four to report their sales. Line five is automatically generated, so there's nothing to put there. So for line four, you put your total sales, so inclusive of VAT. Because line five will then extract the VAT from there. Line six, if you imported any services, you would put the VAT that those services would have incurred there. Since it's coming from outside of the country, no VAT is charged on it. So this VAT that you place there will be removed at a later part of the return. So it's just an in and out, it's just so it can be recorded. Line seven, if any adjustments occurred during that period, you would put that there. And lines eight through 10 are automatically generated. The next portion is your input. So line 11, that once again deals with the port department. So preport registrants would use that line. Lines 13, lines 13 and 14 are for imported goods. Lines 12, 13, and 14 are for imports. So lines 12 and 13 are, would be the total of those imported goods. So when you get a customs document, it'll give you the value of that item and the duties on that item. So both of those figures would go on lines 13. And line 14 would be where you would put the VAT on those items. Line 15, that is the deferred VAT, what I was speaking about. So if you are a deferred VAT registrant and you were given a letter saying you are, you can place the VAT for that on that line. Line 16, like I said, at the top on line six, where you put in your import services VAT, it is automatically generated down here, so that's the in and out. Your purchases, so you go into a store, you bought your goods for your business, so construction, you bought cement and all that. That would go on line 17 and 18. So the subtotal would go there, and on line 18 would go your VAT. And line 19 is automatically generated. So the next line that you would have to worry about mainly would be line 25, and that's once again an adjustment line. And then after that, everything is auto-calculated. So once you put in all your figures and you know that that's correct, press Save and Continue. And it'll take you to this screen to upload your documents. Though at this stage, it won't stop you from going forward without uploading documents. If you require an amendment or a refund, we will ask you for documents anyway, so it's best just to upload your documents one time. These documents would be an input worksheet, which will show your expenses, and an output worksheet, which will show your revenue. And also, if you did import anything, we want your customs document. So we'd want to see all the customs documents. But technically, at this stage, when you're just filing, you don't have to include the customs document. It's mainly the input and output worksheet. So once you put it in, you press Save and Continue. Here is an example of what we would want your input and output worksheets to look like. It doesn't have to look exactly like this, so long as it has all of the areas and we can clearly see them. Because I know some people use QuickBooks, and that does allow you to extract the, an Excel worksheet, which will show this. And I'm pretty sure that the system itself also shows it clearly. So you can just send us that, and that should work as an input and output worksheet. And these are the customs documents that we would require. So on the further side, that is a single administrative document that would show us the price of the goods and all the VAT charged in it. So that is the reason we would want to see that. And this document, so this is just the first page of two. Sometimes you might have five pages. If you are uploading this, we want to see all the pages because after the first page, it describes the goods, so we need to know what those goods are. And we'd also need to see your customs receipt. And we'd have to see that it has been paid for. So it can either be stamped, or at the top, there is a payment status. And if it says paid, we'll accept that. So once you upload your documents, press Save and Continue, it will take you to this page. And this is just a brief overview of what you filed to make sure everything was correct. And you would scroll down to the end of the page. And that's when you would see the declaration. You make sure to click to say, yes, I am sure that everything I entered is correct. And then we submit the return. So responsibilities of the VAT filer. So you are responsible for filing within 21 days of the end of that filing period. And if you are a part of the large taxpayers' unit, your deadlines are actually 14 days at the end of that period. So January to March, that filing period deadline would be the 21st of April. And if you're a monthly filer, that would be the 21st of February. You would also need to file every period, regardless of any revenue happening in that period. So if no revenue occurred in that period, you can file a zero return, but it must be filed, or you will incur penalties for that misfiling. For VAT cancellations, so if you are a registrant, but you fall below the threshold, or you no longer need to charge VAT, you can ask to cancel it. If you do cancel it, you have to keep charging VAT until you are given a letter stating that you can stop. Because if you stop charging VAT and stop filing, you will incur penalties, and you will be responsible for that. And as for the payment deadline and everything, so the deadline is the 21st. So that means that the payment must reach our accounts by the 21st. So if you pay online, it happens instantly. But if you do like a wire transfer, it will take three to five business days. So just be mindful of that because it will show up late if it does not reach our account by the 21st. So let's say that you submitted your filing and you made an error. So you need to now amend that file. So I'm ending a VAT return. So you would go to your My Tax, and you go to a tax account. And it will show you all of your tax for that period. It will show both VAT and business license. But as you could see, right under Tax Accounts, that little drop-down box, you can filter out. So when you filter out by just VAT, and you select the period that you made the mistake in, you press that period, and it'll take you to the... And it'll take you here. And once you come here, over on the side, under Optional Options Available, there is a Correct or Amend This Tax Return. You press that. It will take you here, and once again, you can either select Amend the Filing, or you can just select Save and Continue, and it will take you, it will generate the return. So when the return is generated, you just make corrections to where the issue was. So if I made a mistake on line one or line four, wherever it is, I changed that figure. And then I press Save and Continue. The next screen, it will ask you to state, well, what was the error? Why are you asking for an amendment? So at the top, you just select the reason. If you aren't sure specifically about the reason, just select Other. And then you will have to fill in the box with your error. So let's say I accidentally input the wrong figure. I can select Other and state that I'm requesting this amendment because I accidentally put in the wrong figure. You then upload your documents, so your input and output worksheets, your customs documents, if you have custom, then you save and continue. It will just bring you to an overview to make sure that everything is filed correctly. Then you scroll to the bottom of the page. You click that, I declare that everything is correct to my knowledge, and submit the return. That will create a, that will give you an ASC number. So that is an amendment number. And that way, you can keep track of your amendment. You could go into your inbox and keep track of that. So back on this page, before we close that, I just want to give an overview of what some of the other tabs might say. So your Inbox tab, it shows just your inbox and new message. So if you have an inquiry, you can go to that tab and you can submit it via there. We have the My Tax. As I showed before, you can get there to do an amendment. And that amendment process also works for business license. So you made a mistake with your business license, you could go to that tab as well. If you go to Make a Payment, so if you just need to make a payment from a previous thing, or you didn't file your, you didn't make a payment immediately after filing your return, you can go there. And the payment history will give you a list of your, the transaction on your account, and you can print the statement from there. And then your Services tab. So if you aren't yet a VAT registrant and you want to become a VAT registrant, you can do that from the first tab, so Register New Tax Type. So that is where you would go to become a VAT registrant. There's also the Request the Refund. So as stated earlier in the slides, if you are in a VAT credit and you wish to have the funds either given back to you or moved to another period to pay off debt, you would have to request a refund. And then also, if you have, you have Tax Compliance Certificate, if you need one, you'd also do it from this tab. If you need any information, you can go on our website. There is a Value Added Tax tab. And it will, if you press it, it will list out all of the things that can be found over here. So we have a legal slide. So all of our legal documents can be found under here. So Guides, the Act itself, and even for specific industries. And under that first tab, on the second to last slide, there is something called Completing a VAT Return. And just how I went over, like step by step for the lines, if you select that form, you will be able to see a breakdown of what each line is for. In our forms, like I stated, with becoming a flat rate participant or becoming a group registrant, all those forms can be found here. They're mainly found in 2015, but if you don't find it there, just look through any of the other years, and you should see it. So this is just some of the forms. And we also have a How-To File VAT Page, where it has videos. It'll take you to the YouTube videos. And if you have any questions, you could just watch them from here. And the last thing I want to go over for your payments, if you are doing a wire transfer, please ensure that you have the correct account you're sending it to. Because if you're making payments for a business license, you have to use the wire transfer information for a business license, not VAT, not real property. Because it won't go where you want it to go if you choose the wrong account. So this is just the VAT filing information, the VAT wire information. The next slide is for business license, and the next is real property. And that's it. So any questions? Yes, ma'am? If you want to come up to the...
Good evening. Is there a penalty charge for a late VAT return?
Yes, ma'am. So if you file your VAT return late, there is a $100 penalty for filing it late.
A one-time $100?
Yes, it's a one-time $100.
Okay, real quick. About five years ago, when VAT first was introduced, I took a group of students, probably like about 30 students, to a local restaurant in one of the Keys. I wouldn't say where. And so she came with a bill, 30 kids was kind of like already a big bill. So she said, this is the VAT, and this is the tip. So I look at her, I say, you know how to do VAT? She said, no. I said, make up your mind, the VAT or the tip, I can't pay the two. So that has been a problem, where some people do not have the certificate displayed, and they still don't understand the VAT, how to charge you. I'm talking with small, medium business that have applied for it. What do you do then? It's like I tell her, the VAT or the tip? She said, give me the tip.
So they, so this business, they did have a VAT certificate, or...
No, I didn't see the VAT certificate, but I believe the VAT showed up on the receipt. They got that far. So I said, you know how to do this, and do you, do you do your returns? So she told me, no. But she apparently applied into the system for the business. But she didn't send in returns or not. I knew like that to ask that question, because I was like, okay. But I believe she's under the $100,000, whatever, I don't know. Like you said, that's voluntary.
Yeah, so they can volunteer for it. But if you don't see a certificate and someone is charging you VAT, you can report them, so we can do a compliance check to make sure that they are a VAT registrant because they shouldn't be charging you that if they aren't one.
That's my cousin, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night. I heard you speak about with filing for VAT, which pertains to the business that I'm in. But when circumstances change within the business, just say, I'm in the construction industry, right? And there's a big boom of work from 2021 to 2023. But circumstances change, and you go ahead and you file VAT, saying that circumstances changed, and you file a zero return. How do we go about that when somebody from inland revenue come back to you now, saying that you owe VAT on jobs that you would have put out there for tender, right? Or just say, the companies that you were working for didn't go ahead and finish paying you, right? And now you looking to me to say, well, when I sent you my invoice statements and everything, you were supposed to have collected $200,000, but when I come back to you and said, and I only collected $60,000, and the companies are already gone from here now, how do I go about a situation like that?
Okay, so I assume for the company, you're probably on the cash basis? So in that regard, you would just have to report what you received. Like, because I know the contract itself might be higher than the amount you received. So in those cases, you could just report just the amount you received. But if you were filing zeros and someone comes back, as long as you can prove that no business occurred during that period, it shouldn't be an issue. But like if, when they do an audit of your records and it shows that you did, unfortunately, you... unfortunately, you will be responsible for whatever fees or penalties they ask you for.
But, alright. Then again, I sent in all the information that you requested, right? But I don't know who, when you, you guys are doing your audit, right? But I have my accountant, right? And you asked an accountant or licensed accountant, chartered accountant, whatever, to do the accounting. And I have those persons do auto, uh...
Audit?
Auto audit. Stating it and send it in to you guys and you don't want to accept it from them or the first accountant. What must I do then?
The only thing I could say is after audit occurs, there is an objection that you can put in place. There's like a form to fill out, which I believe it is found under the form section. And all I could say is input that in. It has to go between the audit team. I wouldn't be able to say what could happen there.
Excuse me? Yes. Yes, it was an accountant from the accountant association and accountant from the bank. And I had to send in all the statements from the bank account, right? And everything was proved and everything was found and no scalding, we hope anything was done, but you know? Okay, thank you.
Please give Ms. Brown a hand. Okay, we're gonna have Ms. Simone Lotmore who's going to present on real property tax. And once she's done, then we'll have a session where you can have some more questions, but we just want to make sure you have the ability to get your questions and also get through the presentations at the same time. Ms. Simone Lotmore. 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 She is the data processing supervisor at the Department of Inland Revenue. I got it right? I got it right? I got it right? I got it right? Please give a hand.
Good evening, everyone. Well, my name is Simone Lotmore Johnson. That's easier to remember, Johnson. Okay, like I said, my name is Simone Lotmore Johnson. Johnson, yeah. And I'll be presenting on property tax, real property tax and all you need to know to ensure that you're compliant. Okay. First, we're gonna establish what real property tax is. Real property tax was established in 1969 and imposed on all lands, buildings, machinery, plants and equipment attached to the land. It is an annual tax charged on the value of property on the basis of rates determined by parliament. It is the only form of direct taxation in the Bahamas and is governed by the Real Property Tax Act, 1969 with various amendments. Who pays real property tax? The tax is levied on the owner of the property defined in the act. Residential owners, that would be residential owners with properties exceeding $300,000, non-behemen who own vacant land and owners of apartments, condominiums, large and small shops, or houses on rent. What is real property tax? Well, we determine that it's a tax levied by the government on the value of lands and improvements, meaning buildings, paved areas, any attachments to your property. The classifications are owner occupied, residential, commercial, foreign owned, vacant land and empty property to be vacant. First of all, owner occupied, the property, this slide. The property, owner occupied property must be used exclusively as a dwelling. This is defined by property occupied by a person who is the owner or mortgager in possession that occupies and resides and is exclusively used as a dwelling house or on a permanent or seasonal basis. Meaning if you're a non-beheman and you are using it as a vacation home, it can be considered owner occupied. However, if you are renting it, we will classify it as commercial. The other categories, another category is residential properties, which are properties that are comprised of five units with one being owner occupied or, or four units or less. We classify them as residential. And you must be a beheman in order to classify as residential property. You also cannot use it for any commercial activities. This applies only to New Providence. Persons that, um, behemens in the family islands do not pay property tax. Only if you are a non-beheman. Like I said, you would be using your property as a rental. You know, we have a lot of airbnbs and shops. If you're a non-beheman, you would be taxed. But as a beheman on the family islands, you are not taxed for any type of property tax, whether it's commercial, residential, no tax. Behemens are not taxed on property for any reason. You have to be a non-beheman to be taxed on a real property tax. So if you have a shop, you're a beheman, you have a shop, you have a plaza, a house, no tax as a beheman. On the family island, sorry. In New Providence, of course, there's gonna be a tax. Sorry? Right, not the families, but New Providence, yes. Okay. We continue with the residential property. That would be classified, residential property would be classified as property that is not owner occupied, comprising not more than five units exclusive of our buildings, also beneficially owned by behemens. Okay. Commercial property is another category. It includes all properties in New Providence with more than five units, even if they are used exclusively as dwellings and refers to all properties owned by non-behemen on the family islands who do not qualify as owner occupied. So this means that if you're in New Providence and you have more than five units, even if you live in one, you will be classified as owner occupied and you would receive your exemption on that portion that you live in, but the rest of your units would be classified as commercial and not residential because it's more than five units. It also applies to persons who have more than five properties. Okay. Another category is unimproved land or vacant land. Non-behemen's pay on vacant land. Additionally, land under construction owned by non-behemen, it's also treated as vacant land. But like I said, as a beheman, vacant land is non-taxable, whether it's in New Providence or the family islands, as long as it's vacant, it's non-taxable. It's when you start to, even under construction, if you're building, while it's under construction, it's considered non-taxable. When you receive your occupancy certificate, then it becomes taxable. That's in Providence. Okay. Alright. Okay, we already went over this. Unimproved land, vacant land, continued. It is defined as property on which no improvements have been affected, property under construction unless occupancy certificate has been issued or the property is occupied and it does not include property that is used to carry on any business activity. Okay, do you know your assessment or parcel number? Or do you know if y'all, if or how your property is classified at the Department of Inland Revenue? For behemens to register a property, we require proof of beheman citizenship, meaning your passport. Or you can also use a voter's card, personal NIB card, a recorded deed of conveyance, sorry, copy of conveyance, deed of partition, deed of assent, deed of gift, a survey plan, current appraisal, declaration form and affirmation forms. For a company, an incorporated company, we require the certificate of incorporation, certificate of incumbency, proof of citizenship, meaning passport, personal NIB smart card, stamp and recented or recorded deed of ownership, meaning conveyance, deed of partition, deed of assent, deed of gift and so on, site or survey plan, current appraisal for family island properties and an affirmation form. Now, these would be some of the forms that you will find online. To register your property, you would go to, if everything is online as of, I think, last year, everything is now accepted online, unless it's an objection. The website is, you can be, it can be found at inlandrevenue.finance.gov bs. You would go to the real property tax tab and you would find the forms and all the documents that you need to fill in under that particular tab. Then, this is the declaration form. That's one of the forms, we just go through the declaration, the affirmation, which is used when you occupy a property. You would sign the affirmation form. You have a question? Yeah.
No, asshole. Sorry. If I purchase a property from a private sector, I have to go and get this done in Land Review, what you're saying now?
Any property that you purchase should be declared. So yes, you would have to go to, you should go to the site and register the property because we would want to, we want to keep our records current as to property owners around the country. You're actually, you're actually obligated to do that.
Okay, so if I have several properties, I have to go and register each one?
Yes, ma'am.
Individually?
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Thank you. Every, everything is online, so you don't physically have to come into the office. You can do it online. Okay. For the form. Okay, next, customer details form. Like I said, all of these are forms that you would be required to fill out. The customer details form allows us to, allows us to have, gather updated information, current information on the cost, on the taxpayer. So it's important to fill this out. We also have a verification form that's now on the, on the site that allows you as a registrant to update your information so that you're able to receive your bills every year. And we can contact you. This form is an objection form. Now, the objection form is submitted through property tax inquiry, our property tax inquiries website, sorry, email. Okay. This form is, we call our objection form. So if you have any disputes, you may not agree with the value of your property. You may not be the owner of said property, but we're sending you a bill. Anything of that nature, you would fill this form and you would submit it to our property tax inquiries email site and we would resolve your matter, any matter that you have that you have an objection to. The next form is the senior citizen or pensioner's tax reduction form. As, like I said, family islands are different. In, in New Providence, as a senior citizen that owns property and dwells on that property, they are entitled to a 50% discount on their tax, on their yearly tax. So if I am a senior citizen and my house is valued at $500,000, I would receive 50% off of the tax that will be levied on my property. But it has to be owner occupied and I would have to be a pensioner. So that would be, I would have to be over the 65 and over. Okay. How is real property tax determined? Real property tax is determined by a fair market value of the property, meaning lands and improvements. This is accomplished by collecting details about the property to calculate the replacement cost, which is obtained based on the dollar rate applied to the land and improvement. This means that our assessors would come out and do an assessment and determine the value based on, what we're doing now is sketching the actual building and property size. So our values are determined by the property size and the size of the improvement, which would be the building on your property. We also now include things like pools, sheds, any gates, walls, pavement, anything like that is now included. So a few years ago, values were determined by the assessors and whatever rates, you would have manual rates. But everything is now automated. Once we put this, we put the sketch into the system, it's automatically calculated, the tax is automatically calculated based on the rates that are in the computer system. So what that means is properties that may have been, let's say you live in one area, I live in one area, sorry, we live in, both of us live in the same area. We could live side by side and my property value can be 500,000 and yours might be, might be 300,000, yet your property is larger than mine. Since we did the reassessment in 2022, all the rates are automatically calculated now based on size and not what the assessor thinks it should be. Everybody understand that? Okay. Okay, like I said, RPT is now fully online. And this came into effect for the family islands in March of 2023 and February of 2024 for New Providence. Again. This is an example of the submission portal. Like I said, once you, once you are on the site, you would choose the real property tax tab and it would take you to the many forms that are available. And based on what it is that you are applying for, you would choose the correct application. After submitting a case online, the taxpayer will receive an FID number, which serves as a tracking number throughout the whole process. From the backend, administration will sort the cases based on submission type and assigned to the assessors. So submission types would be like new declarations, change of ownership, splits or merge of property and any other change in circumstance. You could skip that. That's basically for us. Like I said, you are responsible to notify the Department of any changes. Like I said, you are responsible to notify the department of any changes to your property. Um, meaning, or for example, ownership, like you said, new declarations, um, no matter how many, and any improvements made to your property. Also, like I said before, we, you use the portal to update mailing addresses. Um, we, we are using the verification portal to do that now. Um, also consolidating multiple properties to one mailing address, things like that. Property assessment numbers, any changes you would submit online. All right, discounts. We have real property discounts in the form of first home, first home, first time homeowners discounts, senior discounts and early payment discounts. All of this information can be found on our site. First time homeowner's exemption allows exemption, sorry. Which? First time homeowner's exemption allows exemption from the payment of real property tax for a period of five years from the date shown on the occupancy certificate or conveyance. This applies to homes valued at more than three hundred thousand dollars, but not more than five hundred thousand dollars where the applicant occupies and resides in, on the property or is used exclusively as their dwelling home. Senior citizens discounts. The requirements are you must be a beheman, you must own the property and you are entitled, like I said, to the retirement benefit under the National Insurance Act or sixty-five years, eight years of age, meaning you have to be a pensioner. Early payment of your bill must be paid by the thirty-first of the current year to receive the ten percent discount and that ten percent applies only to the current year. So if you are, if you haven't paid for a few years, the ten percent only applies to the year, the year twenty twenty-five and not the previous years. Properties that are excluded from property tax. These would include places like churches, schools, playing fields, attached to schools or churches, um, charity charitable purposes, crown land, um, like I said, property owners that, properties that are owner occupied and are valued at less than three hundred thousand dollars are exempted. Vacant land owned by behemins, improved property owned by behemins in the family islands and properties used for commercial farming. Other categories include embassies or councilor offices, historical buildings, national trust properties and properties used exclusively for charitable or public services from which no profit is derived, meaning nonprofit associations. The real property tax rates, these are also available for your information online. The owner occupied rates would be the first three hundred thousand is exempted. The next two hundred thousand is calculated at zero point six to five percent and the balance of the value calculated at one percent. Commercial, the first five hundred thousand is calculated at zero point seven five percent. The next one point five million at one percent and the balance at one point five percent. Residential rates, values up to seventy-five thousand equals a flat rate of three hundred dollars. Greater than seventy-five thousand is calculated at a rate of zero point six to five percent. For vacant land, this would be for foreign, I'm sorry, non-behemians. The first seven thousand dollars is a flat rate of one hundred dollars and the balance is calculated at two percent. And that's it for my presentation. Any questions? Sorry.
What happened is I know some behemian and foreigner own a piece of property. Do that.
Together?
Together.
It's split in half. So the beheman would be exempted and you would be charged at half the value. For the foreign, for the not be.
The foreigner pay half and the
Yes.
beheman exempted.
Yes, sir.
Two questions. The first one was back to the other leg. Well, I'll go with you. Now, real property tax is not here in Abaco.
Not for behemians, no.
Not for behemians, just for second homeowners, non-behemians.
Right.
Even if it's apartments, triplexes, all of that, correct?
Right.
Okay, just, do they have to be registered with you?
They should be, yes.
They should be.
Remember now, as a, a non-behemian, if they are.
No, no, a beheman, as a beheman, if I owned, like the lady said, four properties, I should register them with you?
Yes, sir.
Good job.
All, but all.
Until they charge me a tax, I don't have to register nothing.
Well, it's for.
It's for when you get ready to, you have it already in your database. Um, the other question is, and I don't mean, that's not an attack at you. You were saying earlier with the VAT, businesses under a hundred thousand. So if I understand you correct, correctly in what you're saying, we have a lot of businesses over here, a hundred, under a hundred thousand or that bring in, you know, mom and pop stores, restaurant, you know, little, little restaurants, whatever it may be. They still pay VAT when they go to the wholesaler, when they go to the food store to buy their food. At the end of the year, do they get a refund on that or are they not exempt because of that hundred thousand?
Um, yes, so because they're not registered for VAT, they can't claim any of that back. So they, they just have to pay for it. That's why they are able to register and that way, whatever they buy, they can get a refund if they're over.
Just wanted, just wanted that clarified in that, in that aspect. Now, in regards to being a business over, or if your business under a hundred thousand, let's say myself, I might not have an office, I might do X, Y and Z. I might not have a VAT certificate. How do we know what businesses they're supposed to display their VAT certificate? A lot don't. Major stores do. Lot of the restaurants do in that regards, but some of the smaller businesses that are making over a hundred thou or under a hun, are still charging you that ten percent VAT.
So I said, if you can ask them to see it, if they don't, you can make a, you can report them. And also on our website, there is a listing of all the VAT registrants. So you should be able to go online and you can pull it down and see everyone. And as for, I think you were saying, if they, like a mobile person, so they can actually display the document, they should be carrying it around with them if they are mobile, so that way if anyone wants to see it, they can see it.
There's one thing I take pleasure in that they sometimes gloss over. It's making sure that we get persons clear on how they actually have to pay VAT. Cause a lot of times persons think it's just the business license, but it's not actually the business license. It's actually the tin that you're actually paying the VAT on. So let me just give you a perfect example. So say you, my good sir, are sole proprietor and you have ten businesses. You have nine of those businesses that are making up to nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars and ninety-nine cents. And you got one business that causes you by a dollar to go over a hundred thousand. That means all of your businesses under that particular tin would have to be paying VAT and have to be registered for VAT. And, and see, we're trying to clear that up because you have a lot of persons that say, well, I got this business here and I got this business here. But this is only making like five thousand, this is only making two thousand. But it's not the individual businesses, it's all of the businesses that are collectively under that one business license. So then say, for example, this lovely couple in front here, there's your friends and you want to start a partnership with them. But your business collectively with them only makes twenty thousand. So you wouldn't pay VAT on this because this is a totally different tin that you're actually dealing with. So it's a different entity. So you would think of each tin as a different entity. So your sole proprietorship, that's one entity that you would be paying VAT on because that last business only happened to make that dollar that one year and push you straight over the threshold. But then the partnership you have with this particular person isn't making it. And then this whole row decides to get together and you all decide to incorporate your business. So guess what? That's another tin because that's another entity. So when you're considering how to calculate VAT, if you got mom and pop shop, you got Dan's Chicken Shack, Dan's Hair Salon, Dan's Nail Salon, Dan all over the place. And then when you look at all of the businesses that are under that particular tin for Dan, add up to over a hundred thousand, then all of those businesses are required to pay VAT, even if they're only making a thousand dollars, a hundred dollars or just that one dollar. Does that clear things up a little bit?
In other words, it's better for me to have ten businesses with ten with, with ten numbers.
You can only do that if they're different entities. If you have ten businesses and they're all a sole proprietorship business that you own, then you can do that. Now, if you have ten different partnerships, ten different L T Ds, a ten different, that is a totally different thing. And hit that million dollar mark, just let me know. Any other questions though? Cause we want to make sure that while we're here, we try to assist in any way possible to try to make this process when it comes to the business license for renewal and the VAT filing as easy as possible.
I mean, my voice is loud enough, but I think, I think one of the other questions I just have, Ms. Noel's asked. Y'all's portal is always down? Or a lot of times it's down when you go to file your report. It's down or it's down, it's down. When it comes time for us to pay, it's our time because you're. There's no, no, no.
No, I, 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 I hear you.
No, there's no repercussion on your side with the stress and the inconvenience that you put our accountants and accountants through. Thank you, getting all that done to do that and to file and then air or down, you know, week later.
I would say this realistically because also I, our operations man tried to say the same thing. Unfortunately, in the instance that if it is down and is on us, we would have to reimburse if something happened, if it's on us. But as long as the filing is done in a decent order and the reality of it is, how people like do last minute. So a lot of times you see the system is really being overloaded. It's because a lot of persons are coming all the time at the last minute. And this is why we've been doing these things early in the month. So when the thirty and the thirty first come, we don't want the system to crash because everybody then is trying to rush to put in their filings and their things at the last minute. Cause I love my people, but we last minute and, and, and I don't know why. I think it's the fees and rice, but I, I don't know, my lady.
Okay, this is just a, um, clarification, but it happened to me in December. This is for a business license. Someone may be having the same problem. I had a battle between inland revenue and national insurance. No one wanted to clear it up and you're the customer in between getting squeezed, December. I said, what I wanted to do is get, and I didn't realize, I put in for my T C C and it was declined. I was in shock because the three months earlier I was approved. But what I didn't realize, and this is how it came about, while I was in Freeport, December, I spoke to inland revenue. They said, go to N I B, get the correct number, whatever that was about. I went to N I B and they said, it looks like you owe in July and August twenty twenty-four. So I said, I submitted the letter. So when I came back, um, I spoke to the N I B representative, it was submitted, but the problem was we were back and forth trying to figure out. N I B was saying that I hadn't paid up and I showed where I was paid up. But inland revenue was saying my registered number that I was using, cause I had two, I submitted as a self-employed. But with the business side of it, one of the numbers was not registered. So apparently when I went to the T C C, I went to the one that wasn't registered and that kept knocking me back and forth. N I B was saying you owe money, they showed where I had paid the money. And land revenue was saying you don't have the right number from national insurance. So when, you know, and we was working with this today for about another hour. So that was really frustrating. So to someone that is not getting their business license approved because they also have other businesses besides self-employed and your business, it could be that your number wasn't registered. Even though N I B was right at one point by saying, cause they said, put the T C C and we'll see what will happen. So the lady was helping me, she was getting so frustrated, like my daughter, whenever I'm hitting the computer, she's like, what you erased? We went through that same step, so I was looking at her. And she finally just says, give me this thing and she stopped putting all the T C C on everybody. She wants to show national insurance, it does go through. So what I'm saying is to anyone in here, check the registered number to make sure that is registered. Even though N I B is holding their ground and even though inland revenue is holding their ground and you're in the middle trying to learn this process, that could be extremely frustrating, more than menstruation, you're like, menopause is like kicking in every January. So I'm saying you all bear, bear with it and just see if you could get through. And I'm thanking God that this lady came over, Ms. Lyons, who was patient with me. And finally we did get it done tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that. I think you know, Ms. Lyons, I decided about this, she was doing a little jig. Um, let me just say this though, we at the Department of Inland Revenue are not the regulators. So a lot of times if you see things that are held up with your T C C and other things, I know a lot of times we're the ones that get beaten for it, but we are not actually the regulators. So whether it's national insurance, whether it is actually, um, planning, once they've given the approval, then there shouldn't be any issues on our part when it comes to aspects like that, unless it's something that's still owed to us. But once it's clear, everything should be straightforward. But the reality of it is we're dealing with human systems and human things. So if you do have an issue, this is why our team is more than happy to assist. But we'll always refer you to the website because sometimes, I know a lot of times persons complain about trying to get through on the phones. But you will actually get through faster using the portal itself and messaging actually in the portal because someone will automatically be assigned to that case that comes up. And that lovely lady that's sitting inside the back, she'll make sure that her team follows up with any cases that come in so that you can get your business license and anything else that you need answered in a timely manner and a timely fashion. Any other questions? Mine has been a good crowd tonight. You, 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 you got something to say? Come, 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 you, you know, you gotta come to the back.
It's going in my head. I have to register my properties, but I do not have to pay property tax. I just want to make sure I get this right before I go there tomorrow.
I'll give you this, I'll give you the simplest thing to think about. Something happens to you and your properties aren't registered. And you have your kids or whoever you're deciding to leave it to. What you're then doing is basically leaving the door open for an unnecessary fight that if it was registered, that it would be easy to actually assist them.
I actually have a will. I have a will for that part, but I just want to make sure, you know, that's what I'm doing. I have to register the properties, but I don't have to pay property tax.
As long as it's on the family island? No.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. You, you had something else? Okay. So just a quick reminder again for everybody and please, um, I would ask you to encourage anybody else while we're here, uh, until Friday to, if they got the opportunity and need assistance with a business license or the government complex, we'll still have our offices open there that you can get assistance as well as at the Alive Store inside Marsh Harbor. We will have the lovely Ms. Lyons again, who assisted you so well today, dared assist many other persons when it comes to the business license renewal process. As well as please check out and follow us on all of our socials, at D I R Bahamas, because we've been doing weekly week shops. We started the month off with business license renewal, VAT filing. Um, just today, we actually did, um, real property tax and next week we'll be doing payments. And this weekend, for anybody that's also interested, we will have extended hours at the government complex for persons who need additional assistance here in Abaco, Freeport, Exuma, as well as anybody in Long Island, it'll be actually to the administrative office in Sims. And for those persons that are tuning in and now, so we also will be at the Marlet Marathon once again inside Center Court with a number of other government agencies and at Alive Harbor Bay. So we just want to thank you all.
One question, man, I know that we just heard an announcement, there is going to be an adjustment in, on April first, which is April twelfth, but.
Yes, sir.
There are certain items that were yet to be determined that will be.
I cannot answer to that.
When I say that, will be back 5% back. They will be back up. Is that going to be, you know, how, how y'all gonna work that in now with the system?
And that's what I'm saying, I can't answer that until they finalize everything they do in that regards, pertains to what particular items will also be included. All right. So thank you so much once again for tuning in. Um, for those online, we're just going to leave you with this video just to go step by step process again of how to do the renewal process for your BLAA and your BLE. And then we'll thank you so much for tuning in and please stay tuned to what's going on with DIR Bahamas because we're coming to you on all the different islands and we want to thank these lovely ladies again, please. Okay. And we definitely want to thank the Murphy Town Association for allowing us to use the building and having this town hall. And definitely you also, Mr. Thompson, for being a part of it for us. And definitely we're going to make sure when we come again, we're going to definitely make sure, share that information and that will go for every island that we go to. So thank you once again and please have a blessed night.
Interested in learning how to renew your business license using our updated online tax administration site? This video will show you step by step how to submit your business license annual actual and your business license annual estimate, which are both important steps in the business license renewal process. Step one, log into your account via vat.revenue.gov bs using the username and updated password. Step two, click the returns tab in the main menu, then select file a return using the tax type dropdown list. Select business license actual, then select the appropriate year for the return that you wish to submit. Please note that if you have not filed a 2023 business license, these options will not be available. You are now ready to start your annual actual return by clicking the start return link under the action tab, then save and continue. Next, click enter license details or save and continue. Then click on the view details link. Under the enter license details tab, click change to make the required changes. Scroll to the bottom of the page to enter your actual annual turnover for the year. Then click save once finished and return to the previous page. Review the license details to ensure accuracy, then click save and continue. You're almost there. Upload the necessary files by using the drag and drop feature. Please note, this is an optional step unless there are required documents to upload. Click save and continue to move to the next step. Review the information and then read and agree to the declaration. To submit, click submit return. Once submitted, a confirmation notice will appear confirming that the application has been received for your annual actual. You are now one step closer to renewing your business license for 2024. Repeating the previous steps from the annual actual return submission process, click the returns tab in the main menu, then select file a return. Using the tax type dropdown list, select business license estimated, then select the appropriate year for the return that you wish to submit. You are now ready to start your annual estimated return by clicking the start return button under the action tab, then save and continue. Next, click enter license details or save and continue. Then click on the view details link. Under the enter license details tab, click change to make necessary changes. Scroll to the bottom of the page to enter the actual estimated turnover for the year, which could be the exact figure as your annual actual. Please note, the screen will pre-populate with general information and recognize if this is a renewal. Mandatory information, including the estimated turnover field, is indicated by a red asterisk. You also need to complete any other field that is relevant to your business. Once done, click save to proceed and return to the previous page. Once more, review the business license estimated details for accuracy and click save and continue. Upload the necessary files by using the drag and drop feature or by selecting files from the device. Please note, this is an optional step unless there are required documents to upload. Click save and continue to progress. Review your information and then read and agree to the declaration. To submit, click submit return. A confirmation notice will appear confirming that the application has been received for your annual estimated. There you have it. You successfully filed your returns and submitted your renewal. To access more videos like this, visit our website, YouTube channel or social media pages.